All right, I think we'll call the meeting to order. It's Thursday, October, it's October.
What's happening in November?
Twenty-sixth. Murphys Grove Committee Investment Trust Board Trustees Meeting. And we got several things to cover on the agenda today. Around five o'clock, I believe, I was informed, we may have a small break. But I'll notify everybody at the time. So we'll go ahead and get started. I believe we have Anna and Brad online with us today.
Are they on yet?
Yes. We're on, hey, hey.
Perfect. Good to see you. So first item we have on our agenda, the first order of business is opening up the floor for public comment. Is there anybody with us today that would like to make a public comment?
No one signed up, that I know of, so we're good.
Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for approval of those minutes?
Still moved.
Second, second. Been properly moved and second. If everyone approves, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes have been approved. Third item on the agenda is discussion direction of the OCIO search. And Anna and Brad, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon and providing all the good information. You have, I believe we have six firms that are interested in working with us on this endeavor. So what I'll do is just, unless any of the board members have any questions right now for you, I'll just turn it over to you to walk us through your packet and presentation.
Great, thank you so much. We're excited to be with you again and getting closer to the goal line, not quite probably to the forty-yard line maybe. So we've got a ways to go. You know, what we like to tell committees at this stage is this is the easier of the last two stages. Analyze and evaluate is to get it down from six groups down to three groups. And then we're on the goal line. And that's where, you know, you've really got to get focused. And that's going to be that five-hour meeting at y'all's offices to pick someone for you to work with for the long term. And we mean, you know, ten years or so, hopefully, even longer. This pool will be growing for many, many years. And so this is still the dating phase, so the marriage is down the road. So we'll get going from here. I'm going to pull it up. I think y'all may have copies. Is it easier for y'all? I'll pull it up, and hopefully you won't have to strain your eyes to see this. But let me pull it up real quick. It's a lot of material. I'm going to please ask questions as we go along. We are ready to get started. So let's back it up a little bit to kind of, you know, this timeline that we've talked about. We keep a pretty tight ship here and stick to our timeline as much as possible. So here, we did the explore phase. We designed a delivery, both RFP worked to vet candidates. And then it was sent out to seven firms, of which six responded. And I'll talk about the one that did not respond when we get to that point. And now we're in this analyze and evaluate stage. Hopefully, we can knock this out in sixty minutes. We'll see, you know, how we progress. And so let's get going. Any questions? None, okay, great. So here are the dates. We're here on the twenty-sixth. We want to schedule some finals. Typically, we have a three-week gap between this meeting and the finals. And it can be longer if you want. You know, we're getting toward the holiday season. Three weeks from now, kind of getting near Thanksgiving, and then another three or four weeks will be around Christmas. So hopefully, we can find some time to. And it's the longest, most grueling day. You know, we're going to have three groups come present to you all, back-to-back-to-back, with short breaks between them so you can really compare and contrast. We send questions in advance, so you can compare apples to apples. And so they'll all answer those questions in writing, which we'll send to you before the meeting so you can really dig deep into, you know, how they look at you. And so any questions on where we are on the timeline? Great. Okay, so here we are, candidate lists. We had seven firms that the RFP went to. SEI declined. They, after seeing the RFP and getting more detail, they thought it wouldn't be a fit for them, so they did decline. So we still have six fantastic, you know, candidates to go through, which we'll start doing that right now. Any questions on that? And I'm going to say, please interrupt. We want this to be interactive and not just on one-way streets. So here they are, the headquarters of each firm. They're kind of, yeah, three main areas. Two in Chicago with Northern Trust and Marquette. Both Vanguard and TFM are right there around Philadelphia area. JP Morgan in New York and NEPC in Boston. So that's their global headquarters. You know, we're going to show you they have offices. Some of them have offices all over the place, especially like the JP Morgan. And then we're going to show you where your relationship manager will, you know, where they live as well and what office they're in. So this just gives you a feel on where their main office is. Okay, so here's some kind of detailed quant, what we call our quant sheet. Gives you a lot of the specs. Once again, compare the firms to each other. And I want to watch a great detail on this. I mean, as you can see from the, I'll kind of hit these five quadrants and what some of the things we think are important. You know, as you'll see, some of these firms have been around for quite some time. You know, JP Morgan, eighteen sixty-three, Northern Trust, eighteen eighty-nine. But, you know, all the firms have been around. You know, the youngest firm is nineteen eighty-six, which ironically, both NEPC and Marquette both founded the same year. You know, headquarters, we talked about where their geography located. All of them have satellite offices, JP Morgan being a large bank into a lot of different businesses. Obviously, banking and wealth management and lending and the different things they do. They have offices all over the country. You know, all the firms have offices, you know, at least four. So, you know, they almost all have a kind of a national footprint. Assets under management, you know, the T is for trillion, so those are the really big firms. You know, as we said, we like to have different flavors. So kind of really big firm, medium-sized and smaller firms. You've got three firms over, you know, a trillion dollars. One thing I would say about Vanguard, it's at seven-point-six trillion. As we all know, Vanguard is one of the leadest, leading indexing and the largest, you know, mutual fund ETF firm in the world. And so as you go down to the next line, there are sixty billion in OCIO assets. So, you know, don't let that seven-point-six-trillion number kind of shock you. It's a more manageable number at only sixty billion in the US OCIO assets. Their legal structures, you know, several of them are public. You know, we like firms, public firms are great, but we also like firms where the, it's privately owned, a partnership, where the folks have skin in the game. That's not a deal breaker, they're public, obviously, you know, Vanguard's of the world. Vanguard's owned by, you know, underlying ETF and mutual fund shareholders, even more. So owners of the firm, you see that in the, you know, the private ones, which would be Marquette and NEPC. Largest owner, we focus on that a little bit just because we see some of these firms that are old, older, that, you know, fifty percent or more may be owned by the founder. And so then sometimes those are acquisition candidates. I can tell you that, you know, the ones that are privately owned, NEPC has done a great job moving the ownership down to the second, third generation. And Marquette has as well. Marquette's founder is down to twenty-three percent and continues to dilute himself by handing those or selling those really down to the next generation. So we don't see any kind of, you know, fifty percent or higher ownership. So, you know, we don't, not saying these would never, the two private firms would never get acquired, but we find that as a small possibility. In terms of size, you know, as you can see, these are all substantial firms. PFM is a more boutique. It's actually owned by US Bank, another very large firm, large bank. And so they are, you know, US Bank is publicly, public, they are a subsidiary of US Bank. So they're a separate, a standalone subsidiary of US Bank. And US Bank acquired them a few years ago. You know, it's interesting, PFM stands for Public Funds Management, so kind of right near Wheelhouse, you know, public fund. They're, you know, really good at public fund side. You know, some metrics that we like to look at here is the client consultant ratio. You know, as you expect, bigger firms, you know, twenty to one is getting kind of high. That's on the high end of clients. So JP Morgan and both Vanguard have a pretty high client consultant ratio. The rest are more manageable, especially NEPC and Northern Trust. Six to seven clients to one is a really nice ratio. So you get a lot of attention, you get attention from all these firms. Total clients, as you see, you know, the metrics here we like to look at is median. So, you know, the mean or the average can be skewed by very large or small clients. So we like to look at the median, so you, you know, stack up your clients as one right in the middle. That's a more representative number. And so, you know, as you can see, JP Morgan's median client is quite a bit smaller than you are now and really smaller when you'll be in a decade or so. Marquette is kind of in your sweet spot. NEPC, we're going to talk about, they have some very large clients, you know, Northern Trust right there. PFM, you know, caters to some pretty small clients as well, as well as Vanguard. And so, you know, those aren't, once again, things that would completely deter you from these firms, but just give you a feel on what their clients look like. I mean, some people want to be a big fish in a small pond. And so, you know, PFM and a Vanguard and JP Morgan, you certainly be a big, you know, bigger fish there. NEPC would be the opposite. We like to look at what kind of clients they have that look like you all, so public funds. As you can see, as you go down the percentage of total assets, you know, NEPC and Marquette, half or a little more than half, and PFM. So they have a lot of clients that look like you guys or used to a lot of the, you know, public disclosures and things that they have to go through as a public fund. And then we, you know, peel the onion back one more layer and look at what their public funds median looks like. As you can see, NEPC has some, you know, some big clients. Their largest one is a hundred-and-twenty-eight billion, so a very large, you know, state fund. As well as Marquette has a, you know, a large one as well, Northern Trust. So there's some, you know, big public funds out there. Then the smallest ones are, you know, a few of them have some billion-dollar ones. So any, even NEPC, their smallest client would be a little bit bigger than you guys. So that, as we go through this, we'll think about this. Do you want to be the smallest fish in the biggest pond? You know, they obviously have tremendous amount of resources as well. And that just goes to, you know, we don't look at their research capabilities. And all of them have very deep research teams. PFM would be of the smaller, on smaller shots when it comes to research capabilities. And then at the bottom, kind of performance reporting. Investment metrics is kind of the gold standard when it comes to performance reporting. FactSet is obviously another really good, you know, big company that has great performance reporting. Then the banks have their proprietary systems. So any questions on that? Great. We asked for them for their competitive advantages and their, you know, their kind of weaknesses. And so these are what they consider competitive advantages. We won't go through that. But it's interesting that, you know, what they think they're, you know, gives them great abilities and what they feel like their weaknesses are. I'm glad no one, sometimes we see none, which is a red flag. Everyone's got a weakness here. But it is kind of interesting to see the way they spend things and so interesting reading. So we won't spend time on that since they are what, you know, self-described weaknesses and strengths. You know, we're very focused on conflicts of interest. The thing about the OCIO industry is very, can be very conflicted because you've given the OCIO the ability to hire and fire themselves in non-discretionary consulting. That's not the case. The committee has to approve every hiring and firing of a money manager. Here, you've given them that discretion. So, you know, we're very, we're trying to figure out how many different ways they can make money off the clients. And so, you know, where they have yeses, you know, things we're worried about are, will be focused on when they have proprietary products and making sure that it's disclosed in that, you know, if they're taking two fees. And so as we go through these, you know, the ones that hit us really are on the second page. And that would be, you know, just for revenue sharing with managers on the platform as well as, you know, people that are taking extra fees. I mean, for example, NEPC has proprietary products. And here, you know, a proprietary product, in this case, would be NEPC has, they have a small cap fund. It's just an NEPC fund where the, they have a pool of managers. So all the clients get the same managers, no extra fees. You know, same with, you know, the other different asset classes. The places where people are taking fees and they're going to make it up to have a lower OCIO fee because they will be taking additional fees inside of their products. But, you know, where we, we just need to make sure all the conflicts are disclosed to you and you're okay with them using their products. You can tell them not to use their products if you'd like.
Hey Brad, quick question for you. Which of these potential conflicts are most people concerned about? Or most of your clients concerned about?
That last one about earning revenue in a variety of places. You're not just paying an OCIO fee, but they're also, they have a conflict that they're also putting you in products that have additional fees. They will disclose that, but, you know, some, you know, clients, asset owners like OCIOs where there's never a question of what they're recommending, whether that it's, if there's a conflict there. They're always trying to find things that are best for their clients. Not saying that these firms don't have great products. I mean, Vanguard's one of the greatest index firms in the world. So, you know, that's, they just use their products, and they're really good at indexing. But that would be the main one. That, you know, some of these are not as big a red flags. That's the one that there is some concern over.
And typically, their presentations, do they provide a little more color around their fee structures?
Yeah, they will. Underlying funds, they have to disclose all that.
Okay.
So little, since you're not under ERISA, which governs pension funds, where it's a lot stricter as a governing body on top of that, where using proprietary products is more challenging. Here, you know, you don't, you don't have ERISA on top of it. You know, your Dallas Foundations, some public funds, just got to be aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
And some people want to, you know, they're like, I want the OCIOF skin in the game. I want them to use their products or what they're good at. And it, and so, you know, some people are very comfortable with that. You know, here on the lead, so we send them an RFP. We don't tell them who to pick, or they don't even say, okay, here are three people. Who would you recommend? They said, we send the RFP, we don't hardly talk to them for a month. They may ask some clarifying questions. And then they send us back who the lead is. So here's who they put up as the lead. All the leads will have secondaries behind them, but we're focused on the lead. I mean, you know, what we like to see, the people with a lot of experience. Hopefully, they have some ownership in the firm, potentially. You know, how many clients they have. So we get that headline number of, hey, we only have a ten-to-one client consultant ratio. Then we see someone has twenty-five or thirty clients they're working with. And then we like to see where these people are located. And so, you know, given COVID, you know, some people are now working out of their homes, satellite offices, or things like that, which isn't a problem. But, yeah, we like to know where they're, you know, a lot of clients like to have some, their lead relationship manager, geographically somewhat close if they can. I mean, fortunately, there's no anything crazy on here. So in terms of each one of the leads, as you can see, they all have significant experience. I mean, Ryan has only been at NEPC for two years, but he gets, has eighteen years experience. You know, we won't go on a, not that I would be a twenty-five-year-old, we have a twenty-five-year-old to get, but we don't want a twenty-five-year-old working at your account. And so, you know, we like to see these people that have experience and, you know, they've been with the firm for a while. Both NEPC and Northern Trust, they're newer to the firm, but they have a lot of experience. And, you know, like Matt at Vanguard has spent his whole career at Vanguard, you know, nineteen years. And so, you know, we like that you have seasoned professionals on, from all the firms. Meaning, you know, when they put some young kid on there, it's not giving you the respect. And that's not the case here at all. Firm ownership, you know, several are public companies, so that's not going to be a possibility. But, you know, Tim is a partner there and has a fairly significant ownership in the firm. And then Ryan has only been at the firm for two years, even though he's got kind of twenty years of experience. And you would assume that eventually he'll get some ownership. Range of clients, so, you know, all of them have worked with clients that are bigger or, you know, at least your size. And so, you know, they understand complexity, especially as you guys grow, you know, how things will change. And then, you know, the folks, the number of lead, where they are the lead relationship manager, not really high. You know, Vanguard, it is a low-cost model. We will see, you know, sometimes more than fifteen, sometimes even, you know, twenty to twenty-five. But here, Matt has fifteen, which is right on the border. We, you know, where we like to see them kind of stop in terms of number of clients. And then geographically located, as you can tell, Tim is, you know, working at a Nashville and a satellite office. So he's obviously very close to you guys. And, you know, other folks, Allison's in Atlanta, and other ones kind of more northeast and Midwest. And you get to meet all these people, so the three firms, you know, all these people will come to the finals. So we don't let marketing people come to finals. We want the relationship manager, their backup, and maybe a third person, someone maybe in research or something like that. And so you'll get to meet these people and see if that chemistry's there in the finals as well. All right, so here's performance and analysis. We obviously shouldn't pick any OCIO based on performance. Pick anything based on historical performance because the future's going to be very different. And so we try to cut it two different ways. So there's, you know, performance where they give us, we ask them for a universe, a composite that kind of looks like you all. And the next page will show you what composite they gave us. But you don't know exactly, and we try to give them kind of the risk parameters and so give you a feel on what the performance has been. But one of the questions we've asked is, you know, every client has, their performance is going to be based on it, a policy index. So it's an index that you work with your OCIO to create that looks like you do. So this much in large cap, this much in mid-cap, using underlying indexes, but it's a blended index rather than saying I want to beat S and P and some bond indexes. An index that looks, you know, this much in alternatives. If we're using that, they'll use a hedge fund index or a private equity benchmark, like a Burgess or something like that. And so we ask them, you know, typically, they'll create, they'll create an index that they hope they can beat. And so this is a very telling question is, you know, are you beating this index with your clients that you have created in concert with them in order to beat? And so as you can see, and the number in parentheses, how many number of clients are in this comparison? And so JP Morgan, and JP, I need to talk about JP Morgan, talk about it in a minute and what they propose. But they are doing quite well on a three, five, seven-year, ten-year basis. Marquette has seven-year numbers, a little weak, but very strong. So this helps kind of triangulate in the next page, you see, you know, what their actual performance is based on these composite. Performance is very hard to figure out in any of these firms. It's like going to, if you have a private wealth manager that works with you and you said, okay, I want to see how your clients are doing. Well, every client could be very different. And so this is the same way here. NEPC has done quite well for their clients. Northern Trust has had tough short-term performance, but their long-term performance is good. You know, we tend to focus more on that five-to-seven-to-ten-year. A three-year could be kind of a little bit noisy. PFM has had difficult performance, and we'll look on the next page and see what those absolute numbers are. And Vanguard, I mean, as you conceptually think about Vanguard, they're mainly using indexes. They will use some active management, so they're mainly passive. And all the benchmarks are passive. And so if you're mainly investing in passive and then you take a little bit out for an OCIO fee, then you're definitely going to beat your policy benchmark. So they'll never have great numbers. Does that make sense? So it's a very, it's not a super fair question for Vanguard. So a more fair question would be, how have you done on a, you know, absolute basis? And so here, I'm sorry? Oh, I thought I forgot a question? Okay. Okay, so here is how they've done on a, on a group of clients, what they consider a composite. Here's the makeup of their composites. You know, they gave us composites of OCIO clients between fifty and two-hundred million, how their public defined benefits have done. And you can see is an OCIO total return. So all pretty good composites at sixty-five, thirty-five, and a seventy, thirty. So we're, and this shows you how many clients are in each composite. Are they net of order like these? And they all are. And that's including their OCIO fee. This is really important to us, and it's becoming more important as more OCIOs become GIPS compliant. And that's, GIPS stands for Global Investment Performing, Performance Standards. And so this is really more of an audit to track record. It's a process to go through this. It's like getting your track record audited. And you can see both Marquette and PFM have done that. So it's really the highest standard. You know, these numbers, we, they give us where we have to believe in. They're giving us good numbers, but we know that they're audited numbers for both Marquette and Northern Trust. So going back to what the numbers they gave us, I mean, I think that one of the things that, and I don't know if I told you this early on, that people are surprised at how close everyone's performance is to each other. I mean, there's not this OCIO that's, you know, earning five percent more per year. If you look at a seven-year number, everybody's in between twenty and thirty basis points of each other. And so certainly make a mistake and pick one that's better than the other. And we have some really good firms, so I'm sure there's some bad numbers out there. Don't get me wrong. But, you know, we tend to pick some of the best OCIOs and work with some of the best OCIOs. So the one thing that you should notice is that they all have very similar performance. And so that's good. I mean, you're, hopefully, you can't make a really bad choice here. But one of the things I will show you is, you know, the PFM numbers, as we saw on the previous page, that they have had a poor time over the last five, seven, and ten. That reflects into their absolute return numbers. And so we see a, you know, correlation here. We know they're giving us good numbers because obviously they're not very good on absolute basis and they're not very good compared to their investment policy statement. You know, with that being said, everyone's numbers are fairly similar, especially on the seven-year. The ten-year can be a little noisy because OCIO wasn't really around. So I wouldn't spend, you know, a ton of time on ten-year. This six-point-eight on NEPC, they have a very small number of clients. So we don't know what's really causing that. But as you can see, except for NEPC's number, they're all, once again, within, you know, twenty to thirty basis points from each other. One of the things you'll see, some attributions, is, you know, as Vanguard's using a lot of stocks and bonds and not a lot of alternatives, that they're going to be very volatile. And so, you know, it's going to be a little bit bumpier, right? So, you know, NEPC is a big trillion-dollar, one of the biggest investment consulting firms. And they were, they will use alternatives and things to smooth it out a little bit. So you see that in these numbers, you know, a little bit smoother, right, than standard deviation. So, you know, another metrics to look at, but, you know, never buy based on historical performance. Just give you a feel, all these folks are pretty good at what they do. Any questions? Okay, well, you seem to be understanding or at least, I think we're headed down the right path. And so, you know, I went through the performance details of what these composites look like. Okay, the good part, fees. You know, we're going to go back to look at Okay, the good part, fees, you know, we're going to go back to look at what y'all think is important, meaning, so, let me talk about JP Morgan, since it's an outlier. So, and we were a little surprised by this, what JP Morgan has said, until you get to be a hundred million dollars, then they want you just to buy this one mutual fund. So, all a hundred million dollars will go into this mutual fund, the ticker is J D V X Z, if you want to look at it. So, that's not quite as customized as we would have hoped, but, you know, for this group, they just had a feeling that, right now, that that was the solution. So, we can talk about that a little bit further down the road here. A little bit surprised, everyone else is going to create something very customized. So, this is the way the fees break out, and so, that's, you know, like, Marquette, first a hundred million dollars is going to be at twenty basis points, next a hundred million at ten. NEPC is a little bit interesting, because they have a minimum fee of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, you guys, you know, they're a big firm, they like big clients, so they have big clients. You're right, at fifty-two million, you're almost there, so, once you hit fifty-seven-point-five million, you'll be at their minimum fee, but right now, you're paying just their minimum fee at fifty-two million. As you can see, Northern Trust, PFM, Vanguard, I mean, it's sort of like a Vanguard here, you know, has the lowest fee, but you also have to take into account that they're earning fees inside of their mutual funds and ETFs, the Vanguard ones they're going to put in your portfolio. So, here's the fee, they're all, you know, fairly close, you know, NEPC is the highest, and that's, that minimum fee is coming to play here. Any questions on fees?
Yeah, Brad, I'm assuming, that's an annual fee, correct? It doesn't say, but I'm assuming that that, that is a hundred and four thousand a year?
Yep. And that's on top of the managers. So, this isn't your total fee, including the underlying money managers, this is just the OCO's fee to manage the money, and then you got fees for all the different money managers they use.
And Brad, I apologize if I missed that, but are those outlined somewhere, or will they show us that later?
You know, we asked for all-in fees, and what we've seen in the past is, they will give you an all-in fee that's not, is not actual, because they'll do a lot of indexing, and then it changes once they get higher, or they may or may not, they do more active. So, you know, the only apples, apples we can say is, here's the OCO fee, here we know they're getting paid, but when you say, okay, what manager you're going to use, are you getting some alternatives, and, you know, performance fees inside of that, which are hard to estimate, you know, are you, you're going to start off doing more passive, and you get to know you're doing more active? So, we found that is, has not been a great way to judge an OCO by, you know, what the underlying fees are going to look like. They're all going to use, these are all big money managers, they've got great buying power, they're going to have very low, the lowest fees with their, you know, with their underlying money managers.
And Brad, over the last several years, has any of, I guess really what I'm trying to say is, is, are the fees, the way they're laid out by these different firms, fairly standard? Are they doing anything unusual here? Are they changing their fees due to potential of an economic downturn, or anything like that?
No, they're fairly standard here, they have to lay down their, what's called rack rate and their ADV, and so, you know, these will be, we can negotiate them a little bit, but these are fairly standard fees. You know, your size, you're at, you know, fifty foot, one day, when you're hundreds of millions, you'll have more buying power, it can really, you know, push the fees down a little bit harder, but right now, you know, you're actually hitting a minimum fee at NEPC that you would be, you know, triggered here. So, yeah, the, the fees look, you know, pretty reasonable for your size.
Brad, I have a question, the money manager fees that really are not included in this, are those determined largely by level of activity? I mean, is it like commissions? I don't know. And number two, with any of these, what kind of range of the money manager fees on top of these fees, what kind of range will be looking at annually? At fifty-two million, I know it'll grow.
Yeah, I mean, they'll say you're not going to use any alternative investments, and I'll say fixed income, the fixed income proportion's going to be twenty to thirty basis points, and the equity's going to be, depends on how much you index, because index is actually free at some point, you know, it's a few basis points. It just depends on how much you index and how much active you do, but, you know, equity's, I would say, going to be in the ballpark, all in together, thirty or forty basis points, so let's say thirty or forty, maybe fifty, all in underneath. If you don't do alternatives, now, you know, alternatives are very expensive, private equity, you know, they'll, Verbus two and twenty, so they're two percent management fee and twenty percent of all profits, so they can get very expensive. But, these people, you know, they have great buying power, I mean, that's the thing about these firms, they are able to use their client's buying power to push down fees with their underlying managers. But, you know, buying power that you wouldn't get without their help.
Yeah, and typically, for these institutions, they're not going to charge commissions or sort of those types of fees, they're going to look a lot like the OCO fees in terms of the structure, so it would be a percentage of the assets that they're managing.
Yeah, these are all institution, you know, these are all institutional OCOs, and that's who they deal with, they don't deal with retail, you know, folks in the world.
One other follow-up question, just to confirm, their, their rates of return, three, five, seven, and ten, were net of fees, net of all fees, net of OCO fees?
Yes, sir, net of all fees.
And all money manager fees, too, were correct?
Exactly, yeah. We always see net of money manager fees, sometimes we don't see net of the OCO fees, you know, it's ten basis points, maybe fifteen, so it's not going to move it a whole lot, but, these are all net, net of everybody's fee.
Okay.
You know, as you're looking at that, this, and some common benchmarks would be, you know, a seventy, thirty, so you, you can see they're all kind of beating a seventy, thirty, so their net of all fees are adding value, but, you know, they're not going to do anything crazy and put you in all, you know, Bitcoin or something like that. I mean, they're, they're institutions, they're going to run an institutional portfolio that's going to, you know, they're going to work with you, the risk you want to take, your projected return for that amount of risk, liquidity, and, and so, they're not going to, you know, they're going to run it in an institutional fashion. So, if we saw someone that was compounding at fourteen percent a year for seven years that we run for the hills...
Hey Brad, while you're on, hey Brad, it's Richard Stone, while you're on that slide, I made a somewhat unique observation about this slide and the previous slide. If you go back to the previous slide, you'll see Marquette missed their seven-year target for client expectations at forty-seven percent versus the fifteen clients ahead. Now, but if you go to the next slide, you'll see that they are the second highest returner on this spreadsheet for their seven-year return. So, I can deduce by that that their clients have high expectations. Is that a correct deduction?
Yeah, I mean, they may have a client that's got, you know, their, their expect, their benchmark that they're being compared against may be very aggressive, and so, that's why, I mean, it's very hard to triangulate on, you know, absolute number they put on a page here, the risks these clients are taking, that's why, you know, this previous slide, this is supposed to be a benchmark that's, that's lined up with the risk that they're taking. And if they're doing alternatives or private equity, those will be part of that benchmark, or they're doing real estate or something like that, they'll have that within this benchmark, and that's what you'll get when you hire an OCO, they're not going to say, we're going to beat a seventy, thirty S and P fixed income benchmark, they're going to say, okay, if you guys do alternatives, they're going to have a very granular benchmark, that's this much in, say, the S and P, this much in EFA, non-US, this much in emerging markets, so it'll be a very diversified benchmark versus just typically a standard benchmark. So, this is just another way to look at it.
Yeah, and I noticed that when I read through the packages, Marquette and PFM, I mean, Marquette does private equity, PFM does a lot of private debt, private placement, other things, so, I mean, from an investment standpoint, some of these are substantially different.
Yeah, I mean, Vanguard's will do a little private equity, they're the most plain, as you might expect, plain vanilla, and then nothing wrong with that of the group, and JP Morgan's just using this, this mutual fund, you get to a hundred million, so then they'll start to do, you know, privates and things like that, but Marquette, NEPC, and Northern Trust, and PFM, as you read through the case studies, which we aren't going to get into, kind of what they would do, you know, a lot of them want to do twenty, thirty percent in alternatives, just, you know, fifty million, especially when you get to a hundred million, you really should have more than just two asset classes, stocks and bonds. So, any other questions on, so we've got the performance and fees, the granular look at fees, and then, so, this is the way that, you know, we went through this exercise at the beginning on what was important to you as a group, you know, as you see, people have different opinions of what's important, but as a group, you know, track record, and we see quite common track record is very high on that list, it's not always number one, you know, everybody wants a great track record, great performance. Relationship management team, investment philosophy and process, usually those two, you know, investment philosophy and process and track record are one and two, relationship management team, you know, tell that you want to have a great partnership with whoever you're working with, and alternatives are kind of split, some people think it's quite important at, at three, you know, third most important, and others think it's, it's not very important at all near the bottom at six and seven. Firm conflicts of interest and fees, which is, I always find comical, people always, always have fees at the bottom, and then they focus on that fee page and that track record page. So, we know mentally that fees are more important than people at all. So, the next step we usually do is, is go through kind of scorecard for, for you all, which you would want to rank the, these groups, and hopefully, you've kind of done that, that mental homework already before, just before we sent the material out in advance of who you like, and, and we like to hand it off, we act as really guardrails to help you go through this process, and as I said, this is the easy part, and I'm sure now you already think, we, we just got to cut the list in half, there's three groups that don't fit probably in your mind, so I'd love to, to open it up to you all and let us kind of moderate as you talk about the groups. As you said, this is, we're going to help you through this process, but you're going to live with the decision, so we want you to make the decision, not us. So, with that, I would like to hand it off to you all, and, you know, it's usually easiest to eliminate groups that you just feel like don't fit, and so, to hand it off to, if there's anybody, you'll get consensus on three to eliminate.
So, I guess we just share our thoughts openly on what we think about these particular firms?
That'd be great, or just what your top three are would be, maybe the least painful, you know, it may be consensus that way. Or, if you have any questions as you talk about why you like different groups, then we, we can moderate that.
I thought Brad was just going to pick one for us.
Don't you do the hit go, we weren't doing that. You'll get to pick, I'll have to pick three, and so, you're not picking one, that's, and we'll help you more when you get down to the one. But, here it's just three, we want people that you feel like fits with you, not who alpha thinks fits with you.
Well, I mean, I, you know, you know, everybody, of course, feel free to speak freely, I guess one thing I can do is just kind of go down the list here, if you, if you all would like, and just ask different questions, for instance, is there a particular firm that anybody has a concern about regarding their track record? And I guess one of the pages that I would reference there is the trailing returns on page sixteen and seventeen, and kind of like Brad said, if you look at, I think that five to seven-year range is kind of what he recommended, and what I've seen in the past in terms of performance and trying to make a determination if we think that particular firm can continue to make sure that, that's, you know, the assets are invested wisely, so, anybody have any, any thoughts or comments on track record of these firms?
Brad, one of the questions I have on track record here, for JP Morgan, they've got these, these clients listed with the, the trailing three, five, seven-year, is that, would that be clients that would be in that one fund that they're recommending for us? Would that be under, under same circumstances, or would that be different?
No, they're different, and I looked at that mutual fund, and the numbers are fairly close.
Okay.
It's, you know, I, you own one mutual fund, it's, it's the least customized and, the most unique implementation of, of any of the six.
Brad, would it worry you that if you're not paying any fees, you're not going to get any attention? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, we haven't seen this before from a firm, it just says, until they get big enough, put them in a mutual fund, so, we're not sure what that service would look like.
Am I correct in understanding, until we got, mentioned alternatives as a possibility, but if you go with JP Morgan, until you hit a hundred million, that's not even an option, correct?
Exactly.
Just a mutual fund? You can't even consider that until we double our size?
Right.
We could do that on by ourselves.
You can buy this fund here if you want yourself.
In five years, we'll be at a hundred, whatever payments we're getting, now, we'd be in that fund for like four to five years probably before we could do anything.
It is a three-star mutual fund, I did look it up.
How they're rated, how many stars are there in the scale?
Is that on a five-star?
Five-star?
Yeah, three out of five.
Okay.
Thirty.
Is it really good, or middle of the pack?
Morning star.
Middle of the pack.
Yeah, speaking to what you like, what you don't like, I, I think, I'll speak up, I respect the world of JP Morgan and their capabilities, but it's hard, look at the numbers to not, right? But, I don't know, based on this, that we're there yet to take advantage of what they have available, so, I'm, I'm a pass on JP Morgan just because of that. If we get there and we revisit this in however many years it is, then we pivot, but as of now, I, I want someone who's more of a CIO working with us on this, this project, so, when we talk about what we like and what we don't like, I love JP Morgan, but I, I don't think we're there yet. And then Vanguard is, I mean, one of the largest money managers in the world, but I have concern on page seventeen on their standard deviation, all three of those are in the red, and, and that just, it's a great firm, but that's my one concern for Vanguard.
I'd like to echo what Richard's saying, to me, JP Morgan is, we're just not going to get any traction with them, and we know the payout, we know how much, how many millions of dollars are going to be added, are we really willing, you know, to wait several years to be able to have some sort of a real relationship with them? And there's no alternatives in that, which, that bothers me, they're into ESG, they're just, and Vanguard is so big, I've had dealings with them at my office, and literally calling day after day after day to get someone to give you the attention you need, finally, we started praying before we made the calls, and we found a lady in Virginia who helped us solve our problem. We're trying to move a great deal of money, and it was just no personal touch, so, I echo what Richard says, but maybe for different reasons.
Yeah, I, I echo that sentiment, and I was kind of thinking the same thing about some of the larger firms, you know, we may not get as much attention that we'd like there, not, you know, they may not pay as much attention to, to us because of the amount of money we have invested, but to me, that kind of brings us to the next line item, unless anybody has anything more about track record, which is relationship management. Anybody have any thoughts on some of the firms that we feel like we could, or have any experience with any of the firms, or based on some of the information that, that they provided, we, we could work with closely?
All right, before we leave, track record, since that was our number-one criterion, and I guess what we had to say about JP Morgan and Vanguard was not just all strictly track record, but even their philosophy of investment as it relates to us. Would say, of the remaining four, PFM seems to be least attractive, and I don't know, he's squat about PFM, other than the chi... about PFM, other than the chart that's been there by our folks here, so, I don't know, I just bring that up not as a decision at all, just an observation at this point.
Anna, is there, when we went to strengths and weaknesses, and some were saying that a weakness was that they didn't offer banking, insurance, et cetera, as we're looking at this, is there advantages to being with a company that offers us a bunch of ancillary type of services, or does that really matter for what we're doing? Is there more of an advantage to being with somebody that all they do is manage funds like ours in this scenario?
You know, I don't think it's, I think they're saying it's like we are job hunting, that you work so, you know, you work so hard, you never sleep, or something like that, it's just kind of spin it as, and you really want someone focused on your investments, you don't want people doing this ancillary services, banking and all that, that we're just going to be your investment partner, and so, that's kind of a backhanded way of calling it, it's a, you know, weakness, and they don't do all that stuff, that you don't need, I don't think they'll need that to you.
No.
I don't think so. I know everybody's smelling the food here.
One of these has a relationship manager in Nashville, and I can't remember which market.
Marquette.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just kind of, you know, to Richard's point, just kind of thinking about that, and one of the things I'm trying to assess real quickly is the number of public fund clients on page nine, and some of that data there, just kind of looking at that. Anna, Brad, are there any particular line items on that that you would look at more closely to gauge what type of relationship we may have with any particular firm?
Certainly, the number of public funds that they have is important, they understand, you know, your disclosure needs and some of the things that goes with, you know, public funds, you guys are unique animals, so that would be important. I would definitely look at that, client consultant ratio is important for us, the parts about ownership, you know, we, you know, the big ones obviously are public companies, but they do have skin in the game in terms of private partnerships. And then the average client size, they have people that look like you, they're really the median more than the mean, the mean can get so skewed by mammoth clients. So, you guys are an oddity in a wonderful way, that you're going from 50 million to 250 million, and not 250 to 50, so, you're going to grow, could possibly grow into some of these guys like an NEPC.
Yeah.
Or even a Marquette, NEPC is the really big firm with the really big clients, I mean, that's, they give great service, that's one reason they have a minimum fee, is because they're very low client consultant ratio, you know, they put someone that's newer to the firm on your account, so that's a yellow light, but, you know, do you want to be with, do you want to be the smallest fish in the biggest pond? And even when you become a medium-sized fish at 200 million, you're still going to be, you know, a medium fish. You know, some of the other attributions, like, big, well-known, like in Northern Trust, a big cust- safe custody bank, you know, that gives people comfort, so, you know, what type of firm they are, how long they've been around, and there's, you know, these are firms that have all been around for a long time, so, there's a lot of stability and very deep resources and benches in there, invest in technology as this world changes so quickly.
Brad, should it be a concern that they only have three public fund clients? Or no?
Um, I don't know, is it a deal breaker, but that's certainly something to, you know, think about.
When you look at total, total public fund assets for Northern Trust is 329 million, so, you know, when we ramp up to 200, 250 million dollars, we'll be half of that portfolio, but, not that there's anything wrong with it, because they've got 1.2 trillion dollars under asset, but, when you have three clients, we would make up 40% of their portfolio.
And when you have OCO only, that is just, I mean, I don't know any other way to put it, that's OCO only, because I know for a fact Northern Trust has other public, uh, public clients, other, they work with other governments, I mean, they were our custodian until we brought in State Street a few years ago, the state of Tennessee.
Yeah, this is a, you know, Northern Trust's bread and butter is consulting business, I'm sorry, the custody business, I'm saying, the custody business, and so, this doesn't ask, I mean, custody, you know, it's one of the largest custody banks in the world.
Yeah, so I only bring that up to say that I know that they're used to working with, you know, governments and, you know, organizations like that who have all these different regulatory requirements they have to meet, so, just something else to know about them.
Yeah, and they can custody your assets as well, so, if you, you know, wanted to, you know, some of it, like the NEPC doesn't do custody, or Northern Trust would, you know, custium as well as be your OCO.
Yeah, I thought that Northern Trust, on the question when it talked about developing our spending policy and investment policy, I felt like they gave a really good answer for the specifics that we need to focus on, and then, obviously, I think that's what we're looking for with this hire, is somebody that will help us, and they all have, they all do good things, but I felt like their answer on that question was, had the most meat of all the other answers.
Yeah, the case studies is a good way to see, you know, their answers, how thoughtful they are, how detailed they got, and how bad they want this business.
Any additional thoughts on relationship management? Y'all don't let me move too fast, I'm just trying to be considerate of everyone's time. Or, does everybody want to stop and get a plate of food real quick before we get to seat four? We want to keep going?
Okay.
We can keep going, Anna. What about investment philosophy and process? Anna, Brad, any specific pages we need to look at for that? I'm sorry, I'm getting, kind of getting lost in the details.
No, that's good, and, you brought up a point, I mean, Vanguard is the most unique here, because they're, you know, indexing, and they will do a little bit in private equity, they have a partnership with a group on Harvard, so, that would be a very different investment philosophy, where the other ones will, you know, do a lot of more active management, a few more asset classes, and have a longer tenure, especially in private equity, where they aren't outforcing it. But the rest have, you know, JP Morgan's is a little unique, they just want to put you in a mutual fund, so that's kind of an outlier as well, but the other ones are going to build your diversified portfolio across, you know, all the asset classes you want, you may not want to do alternatives to start, you know, do private equity and things like that, and that's up to you, you drop, you know, that decision in your investment policy statement, you can say private equity allocation right now target is zero, until you get comfortable.
But, I mean, with changing market conditions and things like that all the time, Brad, wouldn't you want somebody who's actively managing that portfolio and considering all sorts of, because I think alternatives, a couple of years ago, that's where Brad devoted his effort, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, institutions of your size have multiple asset classes than just stocks and bonds, and that's picked up in that standard deviation number of Vanguard, you know, it's very, can be a bumpy ride, and so, when you go through, like, 2022 last year, and you're, you know, scared to come to these meetings every quarter, because you're scared, Silicon State says, that may not be the best experience for you.
And then, I suppose the other thing I would look at there real quickly is years of experience, if I can find that page, which is page 14, and, you know, one of the questions that comes to mind, if, you know, if I start being real detailed in my thinking, is, when I look at a person like JP Morgan's John O'Shea, the question I would probably ask if they were standing here in front of me is, he has 27 years with the firm, but four years of what I assume is investment experience, so what...
Now, another firm, other firms, where he's worked at other firms.
Oh, okay, so, okay, cool, okay, that makes sense then, so, that first line is the years of investment experience at this particular firm, okay, I was thinking that that was just them being, working at the firm, and then years of experience doing what we need them to do was on the second line, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, so like, I mean, if we didn't put that second number, you would think that Ryan was, you know, 24 years old, and Kathleen was 23, it's, he worked at other vices for over a decade.
So, John O'Shea essentially has 31 years of experience, that's the number I should be looking at, okay, that helps me out.
To your point, NEPC and Northern Trust would be the opposite, Northern Trust, who has been with the firm for a year, shows 14 years' experience elsewhere.
Yeah, you know, we like to see a little longer at the firms, but, you know, they have other experience that's substantial, and both with Ryan and Kathleen's circumstances. But like Tim, I mean, you know, he's, he's one of those very senior partners at Marquette, I mean, he owns largest owner, he's a founder, so a little over 20, you know, 20-ish something percent, and he's almost got six, so he's, he's got serious skin in the game, one of the leaders of the firm, so they're, they obviously, you know, he has 14 clients, so, you know, he's been there for a while, he's got a lot, a pretty good number of clients, but he's a very senior person at the firm.
But Brad, you're suggesting that we would probably have someone out of Nashville, is that...
That's Tim, that's where he lives.
So, we would have Tim Verdic.
He's your guy, he's your point person, he's the guy you pick and call every day. Hopefully not every day, but when you need him. But yeah, these are your relationship, these are the lead relationship manager on your accounts, this is the person that will come to the finals, and you want to make sure you, you know, gel with them, and he's going to, you know, be your person.
So, if we had Tim interview, we would be talking to someone with 33 years of experience, he owns almost 6% of the firm, his range of clients served is right in our sweet spot, whether we're at 52 or 250 million, and he lives in Nashville.
They obviously figured out where you guys are located when they picked the lead, even though you probably don't claim Nashville, but close enough. I mean, we're just trying to get down to three, so...
Yeah.
I think y'all eliminated both Vanguard and JP Morgan, so it's really one more.
I'll speak on the opposite side, and to Anna's comments, I'm a fan of interviewing Tim with Marquette, I like the profile, I think it fits with what we're trying to do, I like the fact that they're, the manager is close, has a material stake in the company, there's a lot to like about Marquette, so, flipping from the ones we're trying to eliminate to the ones we like, I'm a fan of Marquette.
I agree, I agree. It sounds like we need to pick two more then, should we keep going?
Either pick two more, eliminate one more, we'll get to the same place.
We're almost there.
We heard Stephen's comment on PFM, does anybody else have, through reading through the materials, is there another one of these remaining three that you just don't have an appetite for, or some concerns, or is this like a what's better, what's best scenario? I liked what I read on Northern Trust, I'd like to hear, I'd like them to be part of the process, in my opinion, just from, there's some things in their materials that are worth hearing from them, in my opinion, if everybody's agreeing, I don't know what you guys think, if anybody's opposed to Northern Trust or not?
I like them.
My top three.
They were in your top three.
I think, I think we definitely ought to hear from Northern Trust, too, works on the line.
Okay, so really, it's between, do we want, do we want to hear from NEPC, or do we want to hear from PFM?
I will tell you, when I read the case studies, I was a fan of PFM, however, if you look at their performance, which we all, not all, but we highly, their track record on page 14, 16, 17, whatever it was, 17?
16, 17.
17, they're the lowest in three-year, five-year, seven-year performance, and honestly, if you look over at their standard deviation, their standard deviation's kind of high, but when you look at their case study, it goes back to what I referred to earlier, they do a lot of private placement, private debt, private equity, I mean, it is, they are very dynamic in what they are doing, and it's, I would say, part of their challenge may be, Brad, you can speak to this, part of the challenge may be because they're, it's not a standard template benchmark mutual fund that's benchmarked against the S and P 500, or whatever the index would be, it's a very unique portfolio, I don't know, Brad, if you have any comments for or against just the portfolio management of it, but when I read through the case study, I like PFM, but it contradicts one of the key performance indicators that we're looking for that is track record.
Now, they're, they're one of the only, Marquette and PFM were the only two that were GIPS compliant, so do these numbers, do they get audited, and maybe their numbers are more accurate because they're held to a higher standard? Marquette is also, but they're one of the only, those two are the only ones on this six that have standard, Brad, is that something you can, or Anna, that you can talk about?
Absolutely, we know that, and we see people have GIPS, not GIPS, number GIPS, we call it, numbers are usually lower because they're real, not saying these other people are all fake, but we know they're real, they've been audited, so, yeah, that could be a reason why they're lower.
They give you some.
And, you know, if you can't decide between, we've had four finals, if it's a little bit longer day, if you want to do four, that'll work, it gets, can be confusing between the first and the last, when you have two in the middle, but, just putting that out there, that we are here for you guys, if you want to make it four, let's do four.
We'll go to seven hours in that meeting.
Yeah.
If that's what the group, if that's what the board will say, five of that, I'm what, I guess, who pointed out that their performance wasn't strong, however, just looking at, look at the range of their clients, and we would be a big fish in their pond, I'm talking about PFM, whereas, if I heard you correctly, Brad, you know, what you said a moment ago about NEPC, their minimum fee is because they serve really big clients, and, you know, we're not that yet, although their range goes down to 10 million, so we'd be, we'd be well above that. The other thing that was attractive about PFM to me is just the clients served by the lead relationship manager, you know, there are only eight, so it's in that lower ratio, NEPC is just as low, if not, actually, it's a little lower, and then the final observation's just, they are $50,000 cheaper in the fees than NEPC with that minimum, that's, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a lot of money, but it's $50,000, so I don't know, just bringing all that and laying it out there, and maybe we just want to go four because they're, I don't have a strong feeling.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about, you know, NEPC, they typically don't work with $50 million clients, as you can see from their stats and the minimum fee, it's just that you're going to grow so quickly that they wanted to participate.
Sean, just to go back and touch on what you were talking about with GIPS compliant, and Brad, Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that most of these companies' financial statements are audited, and my understanding of GIPS is a certain set of performance criteria that's not mandatory, that certain firms go to, essentially, they bring in a consultant to assess their performance processes, then they bring in a verification firm to come in and check to confirm that the information they're providing is accurate.
Like auditing the audit?
Yeah, and then essentially, they claim GIPS compliance, so it's, you know, sort of like a badge of honor, it's not mandatory, a lot of folks are going through it, but that's not to say the rest of these firms' numbers aren't right, it's just another level of scrutiny.
Yeah, their financials will be audited as a firm, but their track records are not audited, so their balance sheet, their cash flow statements, all that will be audited as their... So, their balance sheet, their cash flow statements, all that will be audited as they're going into, but, um, G I P S is auditing their track record, their performance track record.
Yeah. So, are we now leaning towards four, or do we still want to eliminate?
I personally, I think we have, even with, if we have three, we'll still have three unique companies, regardless of how we pick on these. I, I personally would rather just focus on three in this next meeting and not have four with more data. Like, this is a lot of data to comb through. And I think the goal out of that three is to land on one. Um, I, I, I'm not passionate about either one that's remaining, so if somebody said, I don't like it, I'd be, I'd support it.
Where we're at is, is Marquette, Northern Trust, and we're trying to decide between N E P C.
On the acronyms, yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, can, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I've been trying to not speak up too much because it's hard for me to, I didn't want to butt in. But just for what it's worth, um, when I looked through these, the, um, I scratched the P F M for much of the same reasons that Richard was bringing up, but also just part of their, uh, part of their presentation. They just, I, I wasn't very far into it and, and scratched it. I'm not that passionate about it necessarily. Um, I'm not from, you know, I don't have any kind of real personal knowledge other than what I read and all these reports between, you know, between those two acronyms. But for what it's worth, my vote would go with N E P C.
That would be my vote then, I'd, I'd support those three, N E P C, Northern Trust, and Marquette.
Ms. Davis, do you have any objections to that?
I have no objections to that. I was really all in on Marquette and, um, Northern Trust, so I was ambivalent about the other two.
Excellent.
It was fun exercise.
As a, as a point of order, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think there probably should be a motion and a second, and then a vote of just the five members who are present.
Okay. Before we, uh, before I ask for that motion, does anyone have any additional thoughts on, on what's been presented to us today? Rick, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, that, I, I actually felt the same way Anna did with the, the, the two favorites. And then, the third one was just kind of, you know, kind of third place at this point at least. But, other than that, no. And, and like Adam said, I, I shouldn't vote, uh, so I won't vote on it. But, uh, thank you guys for letting me listen in.
Excellent.
So Kevin, could I just ask Brad and Anna? So Brad and Anna, if, if you're looking at what we're choosing, do you feel like track record, of course, is so important? But I know y'all were surprised a little bit when we did our surveys at how important the relationship piece was to several of us. Do you think with the three that we're talking about, we can find that perfect marriage of track record and relationship where they'll take care of us and, um, will be important to them?
Absolutely, I think you've made very wise choices, and, um, I think it'll be a great finals. And, you know, a, a winning final to us is when you're arguing over, you know, who to pick between the three. So, we'll see what we get there, but I think you've got three great choices. I think all three do a fantastic job for you.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, Karen, now, can we make a motion to extend invitations to present to us, uh, for Marquette, N E P C, and Northern Trust to present to us and move forward in this process of becoming our, uh, potential future O C I O?
I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Properly moved, second?
Second.
All those who are in favor, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are against? Okay, that has been, that motion has been approved, and we will move forward with Marquette, N E P C, and Northern Trust. Thank you so much for, uh, walking us through that, Brad and Anna. Do you guys have any more, um, anything else you'd like to share with us today?
No, the next step is getting five hour, uh, meeting time with you all.
Should we, uh, postpone the date now while they're on, or?
We can see how far we get on proposing. If not, we can kind of triangulate from my office, working with everybody to see. It's a, it's a uphill climb to get five hours out of.
We probably need to start, what are you all thinking, earlier in the day, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm here all the time, so it doesn't matter, but.
We've got some important people in this room, so I just want to make sure that they can get away from their offices for, for five hours.
All right, Brad and Anna, thank you for this material. The way you laid it out is very helpful and, um, and coordinated it, putting together for us to be able to review it.
Very good, okay. Thank you so much, Brad and Anna.
Thank you for your time.
Feel free, y'all have a good day.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone.
Bye. It's great, you know, maybe that does make sense. You want to just see what works for them and.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll gather a bunch of dates from everybody and then see if we can.
We could talk about that all day.
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet. What's that site you can send out?
Doodlepole.
What is it?
Doodlepole, Little Doodle.
Something like, yeah, where you put a bunch of dates in there and then see if it works for everybody. Yeah, we can do that.
I wonder how much notice they need, the companies, you know?
Companies, uh, he said three weeks, I think, he generally allows three weeks in there, so, um, yeah.
I think three weeks is likely sufficient, and most of these companies already have their presentations put together, to be honest. Okay, all right, so moving forward with the fourth item on our agenda. Ms., Ms. Brown, are you providing us with the financial report today?
I've passed out a financial report as of September thirty, if there are any questions for anybody on the board.
Looks like we have total asset of fifty-two million?
Yes, sir.
At the end of September, any questions or comments or thoughts on that? Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Other business, Mr. Tyndall, how is the committee on, uh, contributions going?
Thanks to Karen and Angela, they're, they're going really well. Um, we met several times to get their software in effect. The, I think it's open now for applications, they're submitting, people are submitting applications, organizations are submitting applications. Um, and, uh, Angela and Karen did some training with them. And, uh, we actually had a session monitored by Angela to rate what criteria was important to the board. And I think that went really well, so, so I think they're coming together, it's coming together very well. And I think the anticipation is that in January, they'll come to a recommendation, which then, as you remember, will come to the board. Uh, once the board looks at it and passes, it'll go to council for up or down vote on any particular, uh, organization that's been proposed to make a contribution. And once that's done, then the process is good for that, that year. What we'll do, we'll, early November, I think what we said, sometime in November, we'll get an estimate to them of what their number is going to be that they're looking at, just so they can get a range as they look at people's applications about the amount that they would be in there. And then, at, at first of January, they'll get an actual number of what they'll be able to distribute. But we'll get close in that.
Then they'll just have to work within that number.
Yeah, they'll have something to work within that November range. And we'll update them as we go in December and just keep them informed.
Are a lot of applications coming in?
Yeah, we've got, um, a little over forty right now that are in the hopper, so to speak.
So, the timeline for that is?
The thirty-first is the last, so that'll be next Tuesday when it closes.
The whole timeline, the process?
Yeah, so then we'll, we'll kick in with reviews, um, by the committee, November, December, and then they'll leave in January, uh, like Craig said, so.
And that's for checks to be cut July?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, July one.
I think there are a lot of excited on profits out there.
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, any other business we need to discuss today? Any, anything, any board member wants to bring up?
I just have a, a thought that y'all may want to think about. Um, when we went through this process previously back in two thousand and eighteen, we did get together and establish a set of questions because the board wanted to make sure everyone was asked. That doesn't mean you can only ask those questions, but everyone was asked the same question so that you could measure what you were interested in. And, um, so it might be that we all, I don't know about the email amongst ourselves or how we could do that without having another meeting, but.
Yeah.
In terms of just coming up with the questions that we want to make sure we end up with the answers to that are important.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea. What we could do is if everybody would email me what they think, we could take those and synthesize them into a set of questions, because there'll be a lot of overlap, and we can kind of combine them. Um, and then, if you want, um, we can distribute that and see what people think. Uh, or we can come back together and, and discuss it. If, if we, looks like we need to have a discussion, we can set a meeting in a couple of weeks to do, to do that. I think it's a good idea.
And, and to clarify, Sunset Law, we can communicate with you, but not with each other, right? So, it may be that we ask Brad and Anna for kind of a jumpstart list of questions that are standard.
Yeah.
And maybe you send those to us, and then we respond to you, not to each other.
Right.
Here are the questions in this list that I like, plus I would like to add A, B, and C. And then, you could aggregate those if there's a consensus of my A is the same as, as somebody else's A, so.
Yeah.
When we start discussing, um, after all the interviews, it's like really great when you have the answer to the same question for the really important things, because otherwise, you would say, oh, well, number one and number three were, oh, we didn't ask number, I wonder what that, you know, really helps think, focus a little bit, just like this whole process has been so focused.
Because we have people like you on this committee, that's why.
No, because we have Frank.
Hey, I think that's a good idea.
Good, okay, we'll do that.
Is there anything outstanding that we were supposed to come back to and talk about that anybody can think of? Anything coming up on us pretty quickly we need to consider, start thinking about?
Have any lingering legal issues that we were looking for counsel on?
I think we, I need to follow up with Joe Gibbs about the, the.
Yeah, because he was going to the IRS, but that's a, not a quick process.
We're not, you know, we're not in any time crunch on that, but I can follow up with him.
Yeah, it'd be great if he had a determination before we start making decisions on, uh, disbursements. Because if we're, if we're not a five oh one C three, then we're not worried about it. And we're not the type of foundation that needs to distribute, not worried about the five percent distribution requirement. Um, if we fall into the municipal side, we can do whatever we want. And that's probably a good thing i- in the future years more than probably now, is if we do go through a process for contributions and they're to be distributed, and then people say, no, we don't want to have that, then the question comes back to the board, do you want to redistribute it, send it back to committee, or just put it back in the fund? And then, we'll do it next year. Um, if you have the five percent requirement, you're, you're stuck, you can't really, you got to figure a way to get it out. But if it's a municipal side, it can just go back in the fund and be reinvested, and then that will just put more money for next year. So, we'd like to get that question probably before we start to make distributions, but that's July one of next year.
So, we don't have to worry about making any distributions currently?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Flat, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Good, nothing else? Rick, still on?
He went back to his duct line.
Okay, all right, so, I think we're gonna, Craig, we'll just wait to hear from you on future meetings, and we'll.
Yeah, we'll gather some questions, and then maybe we can take a survey and see if people think we need to discuss them, or if the, the list looks like it's pretty solid, then, then we can wait until we do the interviews.
Perfect, and I think that concludes all business we need to take care of today. Unless anybody has anything else, I will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you for your time.